So far, gentlemen, how are you?
Good. Marie was here a second ago.
Oh, here she comes. There she is.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. So what we're gonna do, and I know we're still a bit early, but what we're gonna do is we're gonna convene the Board of Selectmen, recess it, convene the public hearing, conduct it, and reconvene the meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Okay, that's how we're gonna do this. Hi, Sarah.
Hi, Jason, how are you?
Very well, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Okay, it's 7 o'clock. I'll call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Selectman D'Souza, I think you're up. Would you mind leading us in the pledge? She's muted.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the Republic, which it stands one inch under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, so I would ask for a motion to recess the Board of Selectmen meeting?
Make a motion to recess the Board of Selectmen meeting to, so we can begin the public hearing.
Is there a second?
There, a Muska Selectman, I'll second.
Motion has been made in second to go into recess for the Board of Selectmen meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Nordeau?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
All right, the Board of Selectmen meeting is in recess. I'll now convene the public hearing on the proposed changes to the charter revision, or to the charter. It is 7:01 PM. First, I'd like to recognize co-chair Talaminie and ask her to explain the changes as proposed by the Commission, and then after that, we'll open it up to public feedback.
Hi, everybody. So, Jason, can we just talk about like the changes that we made in general, or like walk through the detail?
Your presentation, I think maybe, maybe both. You know, if we were to do a general overview, as, as I was reviewing it, it looked like there were a number that were just really scripters changes, you know, organization and, you know, number change, but not anything of substance or significance. So you wanna just walk through the higher level stuff, and then you can point out some of that as well.
Sure, okay, yeah. So the first change that we had made is in Section 6-6, Section D of the Town Treasurer. We had added Finance Director, and we also made the note that the Finance Director may be the Town Treasurer to serve as sole roles, and it kind of gives the town that flexibility to, when the position is open next, to look for a Finance Director, but also it could be the Town Treasurer. So that, that was the reason for the change. And then also within that section, and the sections below that, to the departments. The very last sentence in all of those words says, "The, the department," so in this case, "the Town Treasurer shall report to the first selectman." We also added his or her designated name in terms of functionality of the town, to make things more efficient for the first selectmen and each department. So that was done to the three following sections of that. Our next bigger change, we just changed all the leave commissions to senior services. That needs to be changed. A bunch of grammatical changes, kind of period between punctuation, all that fun stuff. Under Section 8-4, under the capital improvement A, we had kind of changed that. We removed that the CIP would have their recommendations for the Board of Selectmen to litter that hill's effort. We changed that instead of any time, at the same time that the budgets to their department, their budget departments, department budgets, to give those to the Board of Selectmen at that time. That way, everything's kind of on the same schedule. The next one is regarding the town budget. Looking at Section 1, subsection A on public hearings, we had made some changes with this. This was kind of a grammatical thing, where the original sentence was to have everything published five days after the submission, when it should be five days prior. There's also comments that I have, so I have to go back to that. For the superintendent section for the Board of Ed, we've made some changes with this. Superintendent shall file with the Town Clerk the Board of Ed's budget recommendations at least five days prior. Again, that was a correction from five days after of the budget for the public hearing to be held. And then we have Section 8-5, subsection 4, failure of the budget following the third referendum. So this was our, our main charge to look at. Our new proposed change is to, after the third referendum, if the budget sale fails, the budget's gonna be returned to the Board of Finance to establish and approve a budget for the town for the year. And then furthermore, those have been bill rate for that as well. So that was, that was our change that was really for our charge. And then after that is just small grammatical changes. So that kind of covers it, and I'll certainly open it up to questions. For anybody.
Thank you. You guys did a great job. A lot, a lot of work in a little bit of time. Much appreciated. Are there members of the public who would like to comment on the proposed changes? Paul Anderson?
Thank you. Okay. I've read through all the changes. I think it's a spectacular offer. I definitely will support it. I, I, I know there'll be some concerns over certain items. I think that there could be changes down the road to improve on it. However, in this time span, I think that's all we could ask for. I'm very pleased that we got what we got. So I will definitely vote yes. And I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Paul. Other public comments? Fred, I think you're raising your hand. Fred Stockland?
Speaker here, microphone, I should say. I think all the changes are good, except for the section of 8-4, 8-5-4. The failure of the budget referendum, the third referendum, basically giving the choice of the mill rate directly to the Board of Finance without any further public input other than the failure of three votes, is kind of, I don't know, I think it's out of the question. It just takes the town opinion, completely voter opinion, completely out of the referendum, basic process, this tax, setting of the tax mill rate process. Why even have any referendums if you're just going to give it to the Board of Finance to make the decision? Historically, you know, we've argued in many of the meetings that this has been an underfunded town in a lot of ways, and this is the result of that attitude. But the end result is that the budget has failed three times multiple years. It doesn't always pass. The voters have the last say in the process, and what you're doing is taking away that process from the voters by giving it to the Board of Finance. Because after the third referendum, the Board of Finance can do anything they want under this charter change. I don't think that's legit. I think it's, it's important to be listening to the voters of the town. If nothing else, have more referendums, or, or cap it the way it was in some manner, shape, or form. But don't just stop the process, the voter input process, and, and say, you know, this is the way it is. And the other fear that I have is because of the virus is that this charter change is gonna be put before the public, or, or will not be put in front of the public. It'll be, it'll be passed because the governor says we won't have any referendums. So, you know, you're, you're using a bad scenario to your advantage at this point to move things around. But I don't think it reflects the, the input of the voters in town. That's, that's basically what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
So
Jason, may I field that?
Just, just one second, Nicole. So just as a point of clarification on process, Fred, this is, the intention is for this to be included on the presidential ballots. So there's, that's, the presidential election is going to be held. And so this'll be, whether it's on the absentee ballots for the, the presidential election, or at, an in-person vote at the presidential election. This is not going to be just set by fiat. It's gonna be whatever is put forward. If there's something put forward, we'll have, the voters will decide to either accept it or reject it. So with that, Nicole?
Okay, yes, Fred, to address your concerns, that is absolutely a concern that was on all of our minds while we made that decision. And that's exactly why I voted against a 15% voter turnout, is I wanted to have the voters to have as much say as possible. The reason why we limited it to three is because if you left it unlimited, each referendum costs about $5,000 apiece. And there was one referendum that went 23 times. Now, obviously, most won't go that many times, but 23 times 5,000, that's an extra $115,000 that the voters and the taxpayers can't afford to spend. So that's why we decided it was in the best interest overall for everybody involved. If we limited it to three times and then left it up to people that were elected by the town with financial backgrounds to handle the budget. Does that make sense?
That makes sense to some degree. But again, you know, I look at the whole budgetary process this year, and I was involved with it, occasionally vouched for that. I had some input in, anyway. Basically, it says that the, if the Board of Finance so thinks that the, the budget should be, mill rate should increase by 25% after three referendums, they can legally do that. Now, the voters are gonna say, "We don't want that." But now they gotta wait for a whole election cycle before they can vote that board members out of service. And, and by then, the damage is done. I, I don't think that's fair to the town to, to do that. If you need a limit on the number of referendums, then go back to the 2% or, or whatever percentage that was originally put in the charter to limit the number of referendums and, and still have some sort of, of town input on the tax rate. Otherwise, you're just taking away the, the town's input completely. You're leaving it up to a board that, that has voted in place, yes, but they can do damage. And, and obviously, the general intent of the board persuasion of the board is that we've been underfunded for quite some time. So but that's not what the townspeople think. And, and that's what you've gotta go on in terms of how you govern your people in your town. So anyway, that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Right, and I agree with you. And that was another part of what we had discussed and what got us to where we ended up. That 2% was just a number that was pulled out of a hat, and it was hurting the town overall. So that's why we knew we needed to get rid of it. We're gonna try it this way, and if it still doesn't work, we can amend and change it in the future. And I wish you were able to attend more meetings because we had lengthy discussions on all of your concerns. And again, this is where collectively, the whole board was in agreement with pretty much everything that we came to the conclusion of.
Okay, it's just an extreme position. I think you've gone way to the other extreme in terms of coming up with this proposal. If, why not just take the 2% and increase it to 3% or something like that? It still says that the town's voter population has a say in the, in the mill rate. And with this, they don't have any say in it whatsoever. It's the other extreme. So I, I think your position is taking a pretty big step in the, in the direction. You're probably gonna get a lot of feedback from townspeople in the long run.
So just as a reminder, this is a, a public hearing. If you're going to speak, we ask that people give their address as well, name and address, so that that can be recorded in the, the minutes of the hearing. And also, we're gonna ask that people not engage in back and forth, but rather address the questions that are proposed, make their statements, and then allow someone else to, to speak. So that said, I see Mr. Rous. I'm sorry if I'm saying this wrong. Is it Chris Rous?
It's Rous, thank you.
Recognize you, and then Kathy.
Close enough. Thank you. I, I, I won't take much time. I fully support what Fred said there as a voter, and I've always gone to the referendum. I wrote a letter through the email system and, and expressed my disagreement with this section. And I do believe it is, and I use the word affront to the people that vote. If they didn't like it, it may not be good for the town. But if that's what they want, you're telling them that they don't know what they're doing. And that's the way I read it, and I'm just a voter. And I know that a lot of the people I've talked to don't even realize this is coming about. But I'm sure if the JI finally publishes what you're doing, this will be voted down, I pray. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Kathy, I know you'd ask to be recognized.
I'm sorry, I didn't give you my address. You asked for it, and I didn't. I'm 125, 125 Rockville Road. Broadbrook, of course.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. Appreciate it.
Kathy Simonelli?
Thanks, Jay. Kathy Simonelli, 71 Depot Street. First, I have two sections I wanna talk about. The first is kind of just technical stuff. So in 8-4D for the deliberations on the proposed budget. So this has always been a little confusing because, as you guys noticed, you corrected that it said it had to be submitted five days after the hearing. And it really should be before, that's fine. But you're calling it the Board of Education's budget at that point, and it is not at that point. So the other piece of this that you didn't touch that it says is the, is that each board, and this is the same language for the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education, so it really applies to both, I think. I don't know, I'll let the Board of Selectmen say whether they feel this way. But it says that we shall, at the outset of our deliberations, in other words, we don't deliberate until after this public hearing. So if we haven't deliberated, the budget is not the Board of Education's budget. It's the superintendent's budget. And I would guess on the first, on the selectman's side, it is the first selectman's budget until the Board of Selectmen can begin deliberations on it. So that's just, we're very particular about keeping those two things separate, superintendent budget versus Board of Education budget. It's not our budget until we deliberate on it and vote on it. So I would ask for some clarification there in the language. And there was also, just a little typo, an extra word, Board of Education's there budget. The "there" doesn't need to be there. It's either superintendent's or, but I, I think it should say superintendent's budget recommendations. And that would allow us then to begin our deliberations after that, which is how we handle that. The only other thing that I had in regards to that piece was the timing somewhere in here, and I honestly lost it because I didn't have much time to get this together today. It says that the first selectman decides when the superintendent must present the budget to the Board of Education. And we've never really done that. The Board of Education has a deadline, certainly, to have their budget prepared by, and we manage that internally. So I'm asking if that can be looked at. Talked to Jay about how he feels about it. Certainly, no first selectman that I've ever worked with in the last 10 years has given us a date. So if we can maybe clean that up as well. And then the last piece is that
Kathy, before you go into that last piece, do you have a specific section you're referencing?
I'll look it up and, and put it in the chat when I'm done, Jay.
Okay.
Hold everybody up. I, I didn't get my pen, so I don't see it. The last piece is the third budget referendum. So my one suggestion was gonna be that after the budget, if the third budget referendum fails, after that, that it be another public hearing, as there is after the first and the second. Because that gives the Board of Finance an opportunity to hear from the public again about why it failed and what they think is important. And then, I, I guess I wish, I know that you guys had a lot of discussions. I didn't attend a lot of your meetings, so I didn't hear them firsthand. But I've talked outside of those meetings to people, and I know that you guys had a lot of discussions and looked at a lot of different scenarios. And I realized that having a set percentage, whether it based on, you looked at all the different things of, to whether it, we should be tied to inflation or to cost of living, or to, you know, all these different pieces, and none of them worked in every situation appropriately. And that was why you went this path. So I hope that going forward, you guys will maybe prepare some sort of write-up for that to explain why you came up with this position a little bit better for those people who haven't been heavily involved. Because I think that makes a big difference. The reason you didn't pick one thing is because no one thing really works. And so having a bunch of intelligent people that we have voted in to handle our finances seems to be the right thing to do. So that's my piece on that. My other piece of that, too, one of the reasons I'm in favor of this is that it does set a deadline for setting the budget. The multiple referendum piece from the education side is difficult because there's always an influx of staff in and out at the end of a school year. And spring, you know, right as summer, as school is ending, and, and the earliest part of the summer is when the best recruits are available. If our budget isn't finalized, we can't, we don't know if we can hire. We don't, because we don't know what we're gonna have for money. So we can't get into the hiring, the summer hiring process until we have a budget. And so letting that drag out through the summer and multiple referendums does certainly hinder the ability of the education department to get quality staff hired throughout the summer. So I thought that was something that is important for people to understand, too, about the timing. And I think that was it.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who would like to speak? Rebecca?
Yes, I had two people send in emails to me regarding a couple of grammatical changes. The first one is 8-4D1A, the very last sentence. There's just two Bs in budget, so that one is just a quick grammatical change. And then in Section 8-10, it says Board of Select Man, and it should say Board of Select Men. And then the other one was on page 42. This is one that Kathy brought up as well. There is a "there" in there, when it says the actual departments. We need to remove the double, the double wording there. So the "there" needs to be removed. In Section D1A, and there's another one where it says it too. D1A and then 2A as well. It says, "The first selectman shall file with the Town Clerk, the Board of Selectmen's proposed town budget there this year." And those are the only changes that I have gotten from other public attendance meetings.
In my copy, that's stricken.
Okay, I might not be able to see it on the, the version because it looks like it might be crossed out. I know it's hard to see in some of the spots that are highlighted. So it's already taken care of, and that's all that.
Any other correspondence on this?
That was all that I had.
8-4. One second, please. 8-4C2B. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? Mr. Barton? Mr. Barton? Jim, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
So I'd just like to, 158 South Water Street. I'd just like to comment on the budget referendum also, as the other folks have done. And it seems to me that reverting back to the Board of Finance after the three referenda, as has been stated, really makes, makes those votes kind of meaningless. Over the years, I was in support of of, of those restrictions. Makes sense to limit the number of referenda for the reasons that have been stated, the costs and so forth. I know other towns have gone five, six, seven referenda, and it takes a lot of time and money. I don't think I've ever seen 23, but I think it's important to limit that. And also to limit the, frankly, the, the spending. The 2% has, has not served us well. And perhaps the, perhaps another percentage would do something better, but it, it really, instead of wasting money on many referenda, it's, we're just wasting money on three. If, if those three are going to be rejected, and then the Board of Finance is just going to enact either what they were going to enact in the first place, or, or maybe even something bigger. So I, I would really not support that provision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. Are there other comments from the public? Are there other comments from the public? Are there other comments from the public? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, I think that was Marie, right?
So it's a, the, a vote of the selectmen So it's a, the, a vote of the selectmen, so.
All right, so I'll make the motion then.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Sarah Muska, selectman, I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Uh, all those in favor, selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Nordele?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
We are closing the public hearing at 7:28 PM. Okay. So I would call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen back to order at 7:28 PM. And we will pick up. I think we left off at attendance. All members of the Board of Selectmen are in attendance. The next item would be agenda approval. And one of the things I'd like to add under, probably under unfinished business is discussion of charter revision and next steps. Because there is something that I want to do on that that will require additional action from us. Uh, and we need to just set that. So if we could ask for, um, I'd ask for agenda item nine C to be added, discussion of the charter revision process, please.
Make a motion to add agenda item nine C, discussion of charter revision.
Selectman Nordele will second that.
Uh, all in favor, selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Nordele?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Okay. I have no other agenda items, so I'd ask for a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Selectman, I'll move to accept the agenda and approve it as amended.
Or a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor, selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Nordele?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is agenda, is the approval of meeting minutes from July 2nd.
Jay, we don't have those included in our package. We have June 18th. And we had, we had-
July 18th got tabled from last time. Well, all right. Then what I'll do is I'll make a note that we need to, to do both June 18 and July 2nd next time. Ask for, uh, we're gonna, I'd ask for a motion to postpone this until our next meeting. Do we have some? We're lost without-
I'll make that motion, Jay.
So a motion, a motion's been made by Marie to postpone approval of minutes until our, our first August meeting. Uh, is there a second?
Selectman Nordele will second that.
All in favor? I'm sorry.
Discussion goes, aren't these minutes in our packet mislabeled with the wrong date?
No, they are not. So we didn't, uh, we didn't have the July, or the June 18th meeting minutes available at the last meeting. And so we were going to approve them tonight, but it's not listed on the agenda as such. So I rather would just do July 8, uh, July 2nd and June 18th all at once.
But Jay, we don't have the July 2nd in the package, so make sure we get that.
Right. So we're gonna, at, at our next meeting, we'll approve the minute, meeting minutes from June 18th, July 2nd, and July 16th.
Correct.
Any other discussion?
But I'm pretty sure that what is labeled in front of me as Thursday, June 18th, 2020, was what was discussed on July 2nd.
No.
No. That's not correct.
All the weeks blend together.
Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Nordele?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Okay, we'll take those up next time. Is there any public participation? We still have a, a large number of the public on the, the call, which is great. Um, are there any members of the public that would like to address the board? Please give us your name and your address. I first see Kathy Simonelli and then Noreen Farmer. Mrs. Simonelli?
I'm sorry, I missed one spot in the charter. So during your public participation, should they, should the Board want to entertain my discussion of changing Board of Education to the superintendent's budget? It is also in section eight dash four, D, B. It is listed as the Board of Education budget rather than the superintendent's budget.
Okay.
Now I'll leave you alone. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Farmer?
Hi, Noreen Farmer, 247 South Water Street, Windsor. Um, I have a question, and I'm hoping you can send me in the right direction. I can't find anywhere that we have a noise ordinance in town specifically to motor vehicles. Um, I'm wondering if we have one that I'm not finding, or if we don't, who starts the process for that?
Uh, so I'll address that with the second part first. Uh, ordinances are drafted by the Board of Selectmen and approved by town meeting. That's the, the process. The answer to the first part of your question is we don't have a noise ordinance for motor vehicles specifically. Um, we don't have a noise ordinance generally. Um, we do have a, a noise ordinance pertaining to TV use. Um, and that's, I want to say oh seven dash three, but I can, I can get you that real number.
Okay. So where would I begin to complain about motor vehicle noise? Most specifically motorcycles and the very large mufflers that like to whip around the streets, um, that are, seem to be getting expensive.
So why don't we have a conversation about that offline? And then we can see what, if anything, might be permissible under the law, and then bring that back to the Board of Selectmen.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you.
All right. Are there, uh, see Paul Anderson's hand. Mr. Anderson, name and address, please.
Paul Anderson, 89 Main Street, Broadbrook. Okay, here I go again. I know you're not talking about the, uh, fire department issues, but you have a bigger audience tonight. So I feel I must bring up the idea that if we had a, um, contract with the fire district to provide fire services and a contract with the Broadbrook Fire Department to provide fire services and the Board agreed with those conditions and the cost, it would be part of the budget and they would be properly funded. And all the issues of taxation would disappear. Enough said. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Are there other members of the public who would like to address the board? If there are no other comments from the public, there will be another opportunity later in our meeting. Um, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is vacations. Um, I was asked by the Park and Rec Department to do a proclamation in commemoration of July being Park and Recreation Month. That is included in your packet. Typically, this time of year, we would have, um, a really robust and interactive Parks and Rec program in, um, uh, celebration of Parks and Recreation Month, COVID-19 happening. They've had to find a different way of doing things, but I say that our community services department, where Park and Rec is housed, um, has done a really good job of being innovative and trying to roll with the punches a bit. And to the point where they're doing, um, well, I'll talk more about it in my selectmen's report, but they, they're, they do a great job. And I just wanted folks to know that that's why that's in there. Have no board and commission resignations or appointments yet, although there will be a plethora of them at our next meeting. Which brings us to agenda item nine C, the charter revision process. So we are, and what I want to talk about is just what we do next. So this is kind of a weird circumstance to try and, and, um, move a charter revision process forward. Um, so what I'd like to do is to conduct another public hearing two weeks from tonight and make known that we'll accept public comment in writing between now and then, before this Board decides what course we should take. Uh, and then have, have that public hearing in two weeks. And then as a, a major item of discussion on our agenda, talk about what we have heard between the two public hearings and received in writing to decide what, if anything, we're going to do next. Does that seem like a reasonable approach to you folks?
Sarah Muska, selectman, I think that that's a great idea. The more public input that we can get, the better. So I think, great idea.
I agree.
Anybody see things differently?
No.
No, I agree. I think that's a, a good idea.
Okay. Then if you could, um, you know, we all have varying presences on social media. Um, please spread the word that, that, that is what we're going to do with a link to the, uh, proposed charter revision. Um, and then I'll also incorporate that into my, um, my weekly call that goes out, letting folks know that we're soliciting written comment as well. I really want to make sure that even under these weird circumstances, um, we're doing as much as we can to accept that, that public feedback and consider it. So that's all I wanted to talk about there. And then there's, there are some statutory steps that need to be taken depending on what course we decide to take. If we accept the proposal from the Charter Revision Commission or want to see, um, that reconsider certain aspects of it. Um, or if we want to just, um, end the process effectively at that point, there are different statutory requirements that we'll have to go through. And I just want to make sure you guys are thinking about, um, timing as we move forward. So we, we can delay this by a couple of weeks and solicit that additional public but probably not too much beyond that if, if our intention is still to make the presidential ballot. Any other questions or comments on that? Okay. This next item came to me from a constituent who, uh, reached out initially on social media and wanted to emulate what had been done in South Windsor with the, um, they painted in their parking lot a Black Lives Matter, um, street painting to show solidarity for what's going on around the country with, uh, protests around the Black Lives Matter movement. And, um, she met a fair amount of resistance on social media and, and effectively decided that she wanted to take the conversation offline. Um, and so what she did is she reached out to me with kind of a different perspective and a, a different idea in mind. But the concern that she raised with me is that as a member of the, of a minority in our community, um, she felt and continues to feel like, like, um, we could be doing more to put forward a, a feeling of inclusion to all of our residents. And so over the course of the conversation, um, it was suggested that I consider establishing a diversity council to look at ways of bringing in, uh, not bringing in, but ways of, um, residents in our community feel like they're part of our community in a more meaningful way. Um, and I think that's actually a pretty natural next step out of, um, what we've seen with, uh, the, the recent vigil that was had and some of the conversations that have happened, you know, in the state and around the country. Certainly, I, I think I can safely say that we all want to have people feel welcome and included in the community. And if there is a deficiency in that, we should do something to try and address that. So, um, I, I asked Anna Maria Rivera is her name. I asked Anna to, um, put together a draft charge that we might consider. Um, so because quite honestly, I, I might not necessarily have the perspective of, of, uh, somebody who should be drafting that. So I asked her to put a draft together. She and I'll work on making it so that it, it comports to a typical charge for a council or a commission. And then I'd like to bring that to you guys for consideration. You rightly pointed out that there are no, um, and I, I believe this is true. Um, there are no minorities that are represented in elective office in East Windsor. If, if there is, I'm forgetting who it would be, and I apologize, but I, I think that's true.
Gil Hayes?
Yeah. What's that?
Gil Hayes is on the Economic Development Commission.
He's not elected.
Oh, you're right. He's appointed.
Point being though, is, is I think there's some outreach that can be done to make sure that we're including the perspectives of everybody that we're supposed to represent. So I just wanted to raise that as an issue and hope to have your support when Anna has the charge drafted, which I expect also will be at our next meeting. I also asked her if she'd be interested in participating, and I, I believe that she will be. Any questions on that in concept?
I think it's a great idea moving forward.
Any else?
I, selectman Nordele here, I agree. I think it's a good, um, step in the right direction. Do we have any, um, thought on how many people would be involved in this?
That'll all be something that, that'll be established in the, the charge. So she's going to draft the purpose, and then we need to fill out some of the mechanations to make sure that, um, we have a, uh, you know, figuring out how many people we're going to appoint, basically. There are some other things that we'll, we'll play with, but I'll have a draft for you guys, I hope, by our August meeting.
Okay.
And then Charlie, so, so, because this will be your first time around doing this. I'm going to present, present a charge, and then it's the Board of Selectmen that, that approves them or authors them or what have you. So if there are changes that need to be made or that you'd like to see made to the draft, um, we can discuss that. We can make those changes and then, uh, hopefully establish the council. The next item is a resolution that the Board of Selectmen needs to approve, I'm told, once, uh, per administration. So the last Board of Selectmen did this one time during Bob's tenure, and it, it authorized him to sign contractor agreements, grant agreements, what have you, between the town and the Department of Emergency Services. Uh, what this is doing is basically saying that I have the, the standing in front of, uh, the Department of Emergency Management to sign for the grant that we get to fund our emergency management operation here locally. In order to do that, we need to adopt this resolution. There are some typos in it that would be corrected before I signed it. For example, today's date would be inserted. Um, the date that I took office would be corrected. This was a draft that was done, um, yesterday, not by me. But this is, what this does is make sure we can continue to get the state grant funding to support our emergency management work. And I think if ever there is a year that has shown the significance that that plays in our community, it's been this year. Any questions about this? If there, if there are no questions, I'd ask for a motion to, um, approve the authorizing resolution with, uh, errors to be corrected.
Make a motion that we approve the authorizing, excuse me, the authorizing resolution to the Town of East Windsor Board of Selectmen for the homeland security and Connecticut Department of Emergency Services, Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security.
Is there a second?
Sarah Muska, selectman, I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, uh, selectman Baker, selectman Nordele?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye, with the changes that are necessary to be made.
All right. The, uh, next item is something that I've been working on for a little while. Um, this is a developer's agreement between, intended to be between the town and, um, developers who are doing subdivision work in Town of East Windsor. This was brought up and accepted at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting a couple nights ago. Uh, but the underlying cause of this stems from work that the town recently had to do um, in the Meadow Farms subdivision, which is Acorn Drive and Farms Road, and also work that the town is going to have to do on, uh, K-. and also work that Boeing to have to do on King's Court and Napoleon Drive and Dempsey Road. And in both of those cases, development projects went on sufficiently long and bonds were released at points in time that probably shouldn't have, leaving us with the obligation of finishing roads as part of subdevelopments that should have been finished by the developer as part of that work. In the case of Meadows Farms in particular, length of time that it took to complete the project was so drawn out that the remaining bond no longer covered the costs. And that left the town on the hook for about a $45,000 bill when all is said and done. What other communities have put in place, and this comes largely from the Town of Canton, but these are effectively contracts between subdevelopment developers and the town, making it crystal clear that they are the appropriate or that they are the responsible party until the the projects are completed. So that however long it takes, we can make sure that they are accountable and that the taxpayers don't get left holding the bag for this stuff. There are a couple of points that I would share in here. In in all of the cases that I've used as examples, it's been incomplete roads, which is a very expensive proposition for the town to have to carry in terms of finishing completed roads. So Section 6 talks talks about roadways and actually defines that they are private until they're accepted by the Board of Selectmen at a town or the by town meeting, actually. Section 9 talks about all of the different reporting benchmarks that a developer needs to adhere to to make sure that they're moving along at a pace that is really going to make sure the project comes to completion. We still have a number of projects that and some of them are being done in phases, but we have there's there's site work that hasn't been done. There are terms and terms of conditions of approval that haven't been adhered to. And this makes sure that they have to get a third party to provide to us documentation saying that they're meeting their end of the bargain throughout the course of their development. And then Section 10, in particular, 10C, well, 10 in general, sets the amount that we're going to ask them to hold in security so that the town's interests are protected. Section 10C, the last part of Section 10C says in in pertinent part, "The form of the security shall guarantee construction and the maintenance of the improvements until such time as they're accepted by town meeting." So we're going to annually be able to review with subdevelopment developers that they have sufficient security in place to cover the cost. So if a project starts taking eight or 10 years to do and the price of asphalt rises beyond what they have, what they would have traditionally put in place in a performance bond, the town can make adjustments to the amount that they need to that the developer needs to hold in security to cover our interests. So because this is a contract and because this has been accepted as to form by the Planning and Zoning Commission, what would happen is as part of a condition of approval with a subdivision, the Planning and Zoning Commission would recommend to the Board of Selectmen a course of action based on this agreement, and the Board of Selectmen would have to enter into the agreement with this the developer, because we are the contracting agent for the town, not the Planning and Zoning Commission. They don't have authority to do that. We are the only ones who can set a contract. So it's it's a little bit more collaboration with planning and zoning than we've had in the past. It's something that other towns have used successfully to protect themselves from significant exposure for infrastructure improvements. This, again, was based on the Town of Canton. It's been reviewed by every relevant town department head. It has been reviewed by council, and it's been approved by this Planning and Zoning Committee Commission. So I just want to bring this to you guys and and get it, actually, I would like acceptance by this board of this as a document that we can use for development projects moving forward. This is a little in the weeds. Any questions or comments about this?
Selectman Nor Dell here. So just for clarification, this will this will be used on a case by case development project basis.
Yep.
So each one will be unique. It's not going to be stamped the same for everyone.
Right, and it'll be based on recommendations from the town engineer and as approved by the or as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So what in in particular, what we keep getting stuck with is the cost of road improvements. That's something that Len would have a sense of and would make and has made recommendations consistently in memoranda to the Planning and Zoning Commission when these things come up. So what we would be doing is taking his advice in terms of setting the initial security amount. And then on an annual basis, they're going to have to be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Department and and by the Planning and Zoning Commission to make sure that the security that's held in place is adequate to the outstanding work left to be done.
I did get to, and I think Charlie did too, hear that discussion the other night. And I think this is a lot of great work, and I guess all I would add to it is that one, there's a section in the document that has a list of times that, you know, they would need to revisit, you know, their their bond or whatever. And I felt like that makes an excellent checklist that should end up in Planning and Zoning or in our new permitting software or somewhere that we're making sure that we're we're checking that list off as as these projects to go through. And then the second thing, which was also brought up the other night, was you know, making sure that our bonds are something that survive bankruptcy or other financial difficulties of the of the developer, you know. So I know there was a line of credit potentially would be could be a bond that one would I'd be a little nervous of and rather see something that's, you know, through an insurance company or something like that, something that we're going to get notified if something goes wrong and and to survives any kind of financial difficulty. But other than that, I think it's really great work and something we've definitely needed for a long time. I look forward to getting that next.
Yeah, thank you. Other questions or comments? So if there are no other comments from members of the board, I'd like a motion to accept this as the the form document that we would use so that we'll be in sync with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Selectman Nor Dell will move to accept the what we calling this? Development Agreement to be used by Planning and Zoning in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Planning and Zoning Commission. Right, Charlie, you meant to say Planning and Zoning Commission?
Planning and Planning and Zoning Commission.
Is there a second?
Sarah, did you second that before?
I think we kind of did it at the same time. It doesn't matter whoever.
I think Sarah beat me.
I didn't hear either of you. I must be glitching tonight. Okay, so motion made by Charlie, seconded by Sarah. Any further discussion? Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Nor Dell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
All right, thank you guys. The next item on our business is a presentation from Jerry Wilcox for a project he's trying to do and hoping to solicit a tax abatement from the town. Is Jerry on the line? I don't see him. All right, we'll move along. The next item would be tax refunds.
Sarah Musco, selectmen, I'll move to approve the tax refunds totaling $422.19.
Your second?
Second.
Motion's been made. Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Nor Dell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Okay. We're on to selectmen's reports. We're making good time. And I see the town attorney has joined us, so that'll be the first thing that we tackle in executive session. Just get through our selectmen's reports, and then we'll be ready to go and public participation. Okay. So I talked about the impetus behind the creation of a diversity council. I'm just going to read the the comments that I made to share on social media. Actually, you know, in the interest of time, I'll skip that, and you can read it online in a little while. So Connecticut is hosting a primary election on August 11th, and access to absentee ballots has been expanded by executive order to lessen the number of people who may be exposed to COVID-19 by voting in person. Anyone registered in the Democratic Party or the Republican Party should have received an application for an absentee ballot. If voters enrolled in either of those parties have not received one and would like to vote absentee, please reach out to the town clerk's office at 860-292-8255. Once an application is returned to the town clerk, the actual absentee ballot will be mailed on or after July 21st to those voters who've requested them. On July 27th, Town Hall will recognize Love is Kind Day. To do that, a clothesline will be installed on the front lawn of Town Hall on Tuesday with cards depicting a random act of kindness that the taker hopefully will perform. In place of the card will be hung a purple laminated paper T-shirt with an inspirational quote or a message of love supporting the Love is Kind Day. The hope is to fill the entire clothesline with purple T-shirts by the end of the month. Selectman Muska, I'm sure can provide additional information on the event. We look forward to hearing about that. As I said, July is Park and Recreation Month, typically a time where there are lots of in-person activities taking place. Obviously, with current circumstances, we can't do that. Nonetheless, our Community Services Department is working on on activities that families can do from home as well as weekly drop-in activities by appointments on Thursday evenings. We also have some good news on in-person recreation. In conjunction with headlines issued by the Department of Economic and Community Development, we have reopened playgrounds and basketball courts. So I've actually witnessed every night on my way home, there are people at the town park playing basketball, which is nice to see that that normalcy. Much of the funding that we now receive from both the state and federal government is based on our population. Because of that and because of circumstances created by the pandemic, it's more important than ever to ensure that every person in East Windsor has been counted in the 2020 census. Residents can fill out the 2020 census safely from home by going to my2020census.gov. Our community gets resources based on its population counts, hospitals, emergency services, schools, roads, and more. So just please take a moment to fill out the census. And finally, if you follow the Town of East Windsor Facebook page, you'll notice that most for most of last month, we've been displaying examples of art submitted to us by faculty at East Windsor Middle School with one new posted each day. One new one posted each day. We still have a few here, but I wanted to make note of the amazing work that our students have been doing. Many of the pieces have been both powerful and penetrating, and we're fortunate to have such talented students and dedicated teachers in our school system. With that, I'll turn to Selectman D'Souza.
Yeah, I want to remind everyone the importance of completing the 2020 census also. An accurate count of the East Windsor residents will ensure our fair share of federal funding and to properly distribute seats for the US Congress. If you haven't completed the form, you can do so according to our 2020 census. As Jason has said, your website is a little bit different than what I had put, but they're both work. If you're planning on voting via absentee ballot for the August 11th, 2020 primary, now is the time to do so. Remember to stay safe when venturing out and try to support our local independent businesses while enjoying the nice weather. On June 23rd, the East Windsor Housing Authority meeting was canceled, but I received a phone call from Director Collins who wanted me to extend a thank you to the Board of Selectmen for passing the motion to keep the pilot agreement as it was. They're very appreciative of that. On June 28th, I attended the Community Cops and Picnic hosted by the Broadbrook Opera House in East Windsor, Connecticut Police Department. The event allowed a relaxed atmosphere to communicate with the officers and residents that participated. So I want to publicly thank both those organizations for doing that. It was a good event, even though there was a little bit of rain. On July 2nd, we had our Board of Selectmen meeting. On July 7th, the communication meetings with the Secretary of State's Office continued regarding the COVID-19 requirements for the August 11th primary was held. The Economic Development Commission meeting took place on July 7th, and guest speaker was First Jay Balza, who brought the committee up to date on the pending projects that are taking place in town. On July 13th, the Park and Recreation Committee meeting was canceled due to the lack of a quorum. On the 14th, I attended an in-person meeting with the First Selectman Jason Balza, Register of Voters, DPW, Bill Power-Hafer, and Denise Menard regarding upcoming primary COVID-19 needs. On the 15th, the Broadbrook Mill Remediation Committee meeting was canceled, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Selectman Nor Dell.
Okay, I may be short this month, this week. On July 7th, I attended the Broadbrook Fire Department meeting. During this meeting, the proposed draft ordinance that would help equalize taxation in town was discussed. That was mostly the discussion of the meeting. It raised many questions for them. And I think there's a lot of things that there are still unanswered and things that we need to hash out. I know we have attorneys working on that. And I look forward to seeing a final draft for that. On July 8th, I attended the East Windsor Police Commission meeting. They discussed complaints of truck traffic on Morris Road. Apparently, trucks are somehow getting GPS diverted down Morris Road if they're missing a turn. And it's a very narrow street, so they've had lots of complaints about that. And they also talked about complaints of street parking on Maple Street. The town does have a parking ordinance that prohibits blocking streets, easements, driveways, and the right-of-ways. Deputy Chief Hart says no parking signs are posted on this street and that they have been monitoring the situation. However, people should feel free to call the station if they witness a violation. And again, that's Maple Street on the Warehouse Point side of town. On 14th, I attended the lengthy planning meeting. This is for Alan to report anyways, but I just wanted to bring up some things that I noticed. Many residents, you know, have genuine and valid concerns about the development proposed for East and Depot Street, specifically dust, possible contaminated soil, and things of that nature. But I just wanted to ensure people in town that, you know, this board and previous boards have done many, many things to ensure that open space is preserved in our town. It's not tax revenue that's our first incentive to projects like this. We as well don't like to see farmland and forest disappear for for houses or things of that nature. But it is the step of progress and a landowner has the right, as long as he goes through the proper channels, takes the proper steps and goes through zoning and all of those things to do with what he wants with his land. And if there are complaints, I assure you that the town and the town departments will, you know, look into those complaints and see that things are done correctly. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Sarah.
I began my report with the importance of filling out the census and absentee ballots, so I'm going to leave that part out since and Marie already touched on that. On May, July 6th, I attended the Warehouse Point Fire District meeting. This meeting was a combination of their annual meeting as well as their monthly meeting. The eligible present district voters elected offices of clerk, treasurer, tax collector, and two auditors, all of which will serve one-year terms. There were 69 calls for the month of June, 32 of which were medical calls. Chief James Barton applied for a FEMA grant on behalf of the Warehouse Point Fire District under the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program for the replacement of the department's now obsolete self-contained breathing apparatus. Our federal delegation, Senators Murphy, Blumenthal, and Congressman Larson, sent a letter on behalf of the Warehouse Point Fire District in support of this application to the Administrator for Grant Programs. If awarded this grant, there would be a possible savings of $76,000 to the district. Thirty-eight total fire inspections were conducted within the Warehouse Point Fire District in the month of June. The Board of Education did not meet on July 8th. I did also attend the Police Commission meeting, which Selectman Nor Dell already informed you about in his report. On Monday, June 12th, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee met to finalize and prioritize the projects that they'd like to see the town fund, given the budgeted amount. to see the town fund, given the budgeted amount that they received for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. And I believe the Board of Selectmen will be discussing those recommendations at our next meeting. I don't know. Do you know when we'll be doing that, Jason? No. Okay.
Sorry, I was muted. It'll, I'm not sure if it'll be the next meeting, but it'll be soon. We have a lot to do at our next.
Okay, thanks. And last night, the Board of Finance held a brief meeting where they authorized two transfers totaling $31,000 for an increase in disposal and collection for the town's garbage services. Possibly due to COVID-19 and many individuals being home more than usual, the town has seen a significant increase in trash collection, thus needing additional funds in this area. As the First Selectman already mentioned, July is Parks and Recreation Month, and July 27th is National Love is Kind Day, which is a day that the community will celebrate all victims of domestic violence and the freedom and independence from their abuser, to honor this day and raise awareness about domestic violence and encourage people in our community to help one another. As Jason already touched on, there will be Love is Kind clothesline strung outside of Town Hall, which I think is great considering with COVID-19, we can't gather, but this is a great way for individuals to do good deeds and spread that love is kind throughout the town. There will also be a donation drive conducted to benefit the network and Julie Safe House. I will attach the wish list in my report. There will be a collection box at the Town Hall annex, and if anyone has items they'd like to donate but don't want to have to go to the annex or leave their house, please contact me, and I will be glad to pick those up. And I'd really like to thank Melissa Maltese and her staff for being so creative and hardworking and putting this together. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Selectman Baker.
Okay. So at Wetlands this month, they approved the wetlands permit for the Broadbrook Meadows subdivision. There was, there had to be a wetlands permit for that, because some of the lots are in the upland review area, which means they're 150 feet, for us, in our town, 150 feet away from the wetlands. So that was approved. They also started, restarted discussions on the wetlands violation and fee ordinance that they were working on prior to having to go online with our meetings. And so that, there'll be more to come with that in the next couple of months that I'll be reporting on. Planning and Zoning had a pretty busy meeting. They also started hearing the Broadbrook Meadows application. It's happening with 15 lot residential subdivision on Depot and East Road. There was a lot of public input on that, and most people are concerned about, you know, their view is going to be gone. And there was also some, some people concerned about the environmental impact of the development. So that public hearing continues to the next meeting, which is next Tuesday night at 6:30. So if anybody wants to get in on that conversation before they make a decision, that would be the time. They also heard some, a new application for just a site plan modification, and they had an informal discussion for another solar, we seem to have a lot of sunshine available here in East Windsor, but a mulnite farm solar project that's known as, it's on the corner of Barber Hill and Rockville Road. And so they did a presentation, that group did a presentation, and actually, there was some feedback by, I think it's the one resident that would be able to see that from their house, that installation. So obviously, more to come on that. And as a reminder, these don't come through as permits that we give in town for anything. They do come to us, to our various boards and give us a heads-up, but they are regulated by the Connecticut Siding Council. And so our involvement tends to be more on the tax abatement side if we so choose. So anyway, there'll be more to come on that as well. And then finally, I attended a pension special meeting. We're working on more negotiations for the various pension plans that are out there. So that will be ongoing over the next year, I'm sure. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Selectman Baker. We're now going to move on to our second and final opportunity for public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Please use your name and your address. I see Mr. Leach.
Robert Leach, 39 Church Street. I wanted to address a comment made by Ms. Farmer earlier in public participation regarding complaints of noise. All complaints, motor vehicle complaints in particular, should always be forwarded to the department, the East Windsor Police Department. And then again, the Police Commission is your local traffic authority. In regards to motorcycle noise and decibel levels, any motor vehicle noise is regulated now by the state with certain decibel levels. And I can tell you that for motorcycles, in a speed limit zone of 35 or more, the maximum decibel level is 82 decibels. Please keep in mind that I'm quite certain that the police department does not have the equipment available to measure noise with a decibel meter. So all we could do would be to take your complaint and make a recommendation, should we be able to find driver in that case. So in conclusion, just wanted to state that we do have noise ordinances, not ordinances, but the state laws that pertain to this. So keep that in mind. And then again, any motor vehicle complaints whatsoever should always go to the police department. Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Are there any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-206B to include the town attorney. Josh Bahaaks Lads.
Selectmen Norrell, so moved.
Sarah Muska, Selectmen, I'll second.
All in favor, I will call the roll. Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
All right. Can I go into executive session? Peg, there will likely be action after the executive session. I can catch up with you tomorrow with what the motions are and who the makers are, or you can review the video. So no need to stick around. Thank you all very much. Just give folks a minute to show themselves out. All right, we are in executive session. Nobody's getting in without permission. 9:56, we are coming out of executive session. We have three items to act upon as, under New Business 10E. First item is discussion and ratification of the DPW contracts. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the ratification of the contract between DPW, ASME Council for Local 1303-166, effective July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Selectmen Norrell will second that.
So for discussion, I just want to, I want to thank the representatives from the Public Works Union for good conversations that resulted in us resolving the contract in a very quick fashion and with very minimal legal expenses incurred by the town. I think it really is emblematic of their commitment to the community and their willingness to work with us. I'm appreciative of that. Any other comments? If not, I'll call a vote. Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
All in favor, the contract is adopted. I'll let them know. Thank you guys very much.
Well, thank you.
The next item is a fixed assessment between the Town SL12 South Main Street LLC. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the, or authorize the First Selectman to sign the fixed assessment between the Town of East Windsor and SL12 South Main Street LLC, subject to review and confirmation of the effective date later than the October 1 grand list of next year.
Is there a second?
Sarah Muska, Selectmen, I'll second.
Motion has been made. Just for discussion, I would say, these guys have been incredibly professional operation to work with so far. I'm elated to have them join the community, and I hope that there's opportunity for us to do other type, other similar agreements in the future. They, their project will fit in exactly with what our grand list calls for in that area. So it's exciting to see that come to fruition. Any other comments? Seeing none. Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
So carries unanimously. And finally, adoption of an appendix between the town and the clerical union.
Selectmen Norrell will move to ratify the amendment Appendix C in the pension document for the clerical pension contract.
Is there a second?
Sarah Muska, Selectmen, I'll second.
Just for discussion, I'd like to thank the clerical union for their patience in getting this resolved, something that should have been cleared up several years ago. And to have this be able to be resolved in a favorable fashion that has the interest of all parties involved is really a good thing to get off the to-do list. And it should have been years ago, and I wish that it had been. And I appreciate their understanding. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I call the roll. Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza. Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I have no other business to come before the board. Do any other members have any business to come before the board?
Selectmen Norrell would move for adjournment.
Is there a second?
Sarah Muska, Selectmen, I'll second.
Is a non-debatable motion, and none of us would anyway. So all in favor, I will call the roll. Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 10:02 PM. I appreciate you guys sticking in for a long meeting, but we got a lot done. Be prepared for the next one, because we have a long to-do list next time. See you soon.